Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeals for tonight's meeting, Wednesday, October 28, 2020. It is 6:32, and we are at Room 320 at the Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Roadway, Hammers. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I make a roll call. My far right, Mr. Walter Cruz, Veronica Dabenees, our clerk, Jim Akabachi. My far left, Mr. Sample, Mr. Conti, our town planner, Ken Buckland, myself, the chair, Nazir Okalasi. Also present, professional engineer, independent counsel, Mr. Charles Rowley. We got some quick business to do with coastal cultivars. Okay? All right. I guess it's not a public hearing. You're requesting a minor modification, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's state the name and addresses for the record.
Krishna Gandhi.
Yep.
And address is 1241 North Ford Street, Golden, Colorado.
Yep.
Ben Smith, Coastal Cultivars, 3 Cardman Road, Hingham, Mass.
Brian Brady, GAF Engineering.
All right. Would we leave it last time, containers or seven of them? Where they go?
Yeah, so we understood the, kind of, the issue the town was seeing with that. So we talked to our head growers, CCC consultants and engineers, and worked on a more refined solution. So what we're able to do is use the greenhouses that are laid out in our special permit with some slight interior modifications and make those work.
That saves you a million dollar.
Well, not quite, but, you know, we're here today, though. That's gonna work for us for the propagation over the winter. But we'd like to request some additional clearing of trees. Basically, we're looking for 75 feet to the west and about 100 feet further south of the existing limit of clear for about an additional two acres. And there's multiple reasons for this. The first being that the greenhouses, replacing the grow pods, are not gonna count towards the allotted canopy that the CCC gave us. So that's gonna displace some of the original planned mature canopy. The second reason is now that we've cleared the trees, the actual shadow lines are established, and the canopy needs to be set a little further back than we originally anticipated. The final and most relevant one is plant spacing. We've begun to better understand challenges faced by the existing outdoor cultivations in Massachusetts, and plant spacing is a significant problem they're seeing. So we wanna give the plants more space to ensure a safe and compliant final product. One of the big problems they're seeing is mildew, and really, the only solution for that is better plant spacing. So we're not trying to change the canopy at all. We just want, instead of having tight rows, wider rows, so more air can get through and make a healthier product. We're presenting this as a minor change because there's no change in use, no change in canopy, no change in significant site improvements, no change in value or host community agreement, no change in property line setbacks, no change to riverfront area or wetland buffer, and the security vulnerability is the same thing. We're just gonna have to follow the CCC requirements, and nothing can happen cannabis-related until they come through and mark that off.
All right, so you're proposing in the back end over there, the west, southwest area to be cleared to more acres, right?
Yes, it's back.
Over there where it says, "No work or clearing shall take place in this 200 riverfront area?"
No, sir. We're staying east of that line. Yes, sir, right in there. So there's the riverfront, and we're gonna stay east of that. Yes, sir.
Got that way off. All right, Walter, what do you think?
I mean, I haven't seen the site, so I don't know. I mean, you're talking the trees on this side are casting a shadow, so you're not...
Yeah, it's part of it.
...in the sun?
Yes.
In the wintertime, or is it in the summertime?
Basically, spring through fall.
Spring through fall?
Yes, sir. So that's part of it. And another one is we'd like to have lower density, which will basically just make it a lot easier for us to have a compliant product and less mildew issues.
You're gonna take out all the trees? Or you're just gonna take out the ones that are obstructing your shadow? Or you're gonna, it's gonna be bare all the way to your fence line?
No, just to the line, yes, sir, right there.
So there was, I hate to interrupt.
Let Veronica. Walter, you also?
Yeah, I'm also.
Veronica.
I'd like to hear what the rest of the board has to say about the clearing, but could you explain to me, just for curiosity's sake, how, what are you gonna do now that the containers aren't gonna be there? You said something about using what you have?
Yeah, so we're gonna put a few of the greenhouses in place, and they'll be insulated instead of the original ones, which were just gonna basically be hoop houses that use the sun. So we'll insulate them and get some heat going in there, basically allow it, over the winter, you know, we can grow in there. And that is gonna displace some of the area that was gonna be used for mature canopy. So that's, that's kind of one of the small issues that's taken up some of our space.
So if you insulate that and stuff, so that means that, what happens in the spring and through the fall with sunlight and stuff? Are you creating artificial light in those, in that?
No, we're not gonna have to really use those in the spring and fall. We'll keep some plants going there to just preserve our quality of genetics on site. But all the mature growing's gonna be done outside. The stuff that's really energy-intensive, that indoor growers use and suck up a lot of energy, that's all gonna be just sun-powered, and those'll pretty much be turned off in the summer. Yes, ma'am.
Jim.
I'm good.
Looks good to me, better than the other proposal, a lot cheaper. Mr. Conti.
I agree. I like this proposal a lot better than the other one. Appreciate it.
Mr. Sample?
I also agree. Thank you.
All right. Kenny, do you have?
I might, I, can you tell me where the fence is gonna be in relationship to what you're doing with the guy?
It's all the thing with the dot.
The very dark line, is that it? Or is it the one?
The dark with dots, about 10 feet away.
Yeah.
Link fence, security, da-da-da with the arrows, yeah. See this line?
I do, Jim. If I had a long time, I probably could've found it, but...
That's all right, that's all right.
There's a lot of lines on there.
Thank you.
So it's being taken away, I understand, to this line, not here? This says propose outdoor air grow area. So this is all your grow area? So you're taking it just to the edge of that next lot line?
That's, that's the clearing. Right, so the south boundaries, basically.
Whoever owns that lot, if they have an issue with all the trees being gone?
It's also industrial, so regardless. I'm sure they're gonna do the same thing. This is all an area industrial.
It's industrial. There are no, no neighbors on the direct abutting lots. It's all vacant lots, directly abutting them. Then there's a wetland, then there's a river, and then there's a residential neighborhood. So it's about 1,000 feet away to the nearest developed home.
I don't have a problem with it.
Charlie, do you have any input on that?
What is the original growing, total growing area on the old plan as opposed to what it is on this one?
The canopy area hasn't changed. It's 100,000 square feet under canopy. It's just the, they're having to move, or use some of the greenhouse space for their propagation. So that's taking up about a third of the greenhouse area. And with their discussions with the growers on Western Mass, they're finding that they have to increase the separation to, as Krishna said, they have problems with mildew. So it's just, they're needing a larger footprint. But the 100,000 square foot canopy is under grow, is limited by CCC licensing.
I don't know that that answered my question, but you had a certain amount of area before on the old plan. What is it on this one?
The increase is about 90,000 square feet.
So it basically doubles what you had.
No, of clearance, not a greenhouse, right?
Right.
Not, not grow.
I'm talking about the entire growing area on the site. How much of it was dedicated to the growing area on the site?
I remember last time you said 80 and 20, right? 80,000 in greenhouse and 20,000 warehouse, right?
There was 100,000 square feet of greenhouse.
How much?
100,000 square feet of greenhouse. The entire grow was proposed to be in the greenhouse.
Okay, but the warehouse is 20.
20.
And the greenhouse was, the permit we issued you was 100,000? Greenhouse or 80?
100,000 greenhouse.
We issue 100, you sure?
100,000 greenhouse and 20,000 warehouse.
Yes, sir, and then there's, this is obviously just a smaller sketch, but you know, we had parking and the drainage base.
Well, we could check it out.
Yeah.
So is the greenhouse staying the same?
The greenhouses aren't changing. They're staying the same. It's just some of the grow component is going to outdoor.
Oh, are you gonna grow outside?
Yes, yes.
Okay, let me just fill in Charlie. Charlie, last week, they came in, they wanted to put seven containers. You weren't here. It's eight by 40 feet containers, so they plant early. And we suggested that's major modification because seven containers closed in. We said, "You gotta see the commissioner, see the fire department, if they okay with it." We didn't have, I didn't have personally a problem with the looks of it, but I wasn't the commissioner. We want to see what the commissioner would say, or fire department. So I guess they came back today, and they remediated by not asking for this. So what, they're here tonight for minor modification, if we believe it's a minor modification. So now we go, and now, so you understand what they're here for? You weren't here last time, right?
Right.
Right, so that's what they're here for, for a minor. They want, so they wanted to, they get rid of the container, and they wanted to, I guess, increase, they're gonna, you're gonna plant outside?
Yes, sir.
Well, the greenhouses were still an outdoor grow. They had retractable fabric on the roof, and they were to remain open until some inclement weather was forecast or other reasons when they would bring the roofs over.
Excuse me, but the grow area originally was 100,000 feet, and the grow area now is 100,000 square feet. The grow area has not changed. What you're changing is the amount of shade that the trees make.
Well, I think what Charlie's alluding to, there's the grow area that's licensed by CCC. It's 100,000 square feet of canopy, of plant. The propagation does not count towards that 100,000 square feet. So as they're growing from nursery, from seeds, it doesn't count towards the 100,000.
And I can kind of, to clarify that, the CCC, they're very clear. They say it's, the canopy is established, a clearly defined area. So we put up trellises to support the plants, and that's our clearly defined area. In this case, it's gonna be four-foot-wide rows that go the length, whatever length you wanna put in. So if we have four-foot-wide rows in between them for working without mature plants, that doesn't count towards our 100,000 square feet, just like the nursery doesn't count towards our 100,000 square feet because those plants will have no THC. They're basically just seeds growing, tiny little things.
So the canopy isn't the canopy that I drive under when I go fill up with gas. The canopy is the marijuana leaves on the plants.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's basically what the CCC is regulating. They don't care about how much workspace we have. They just care, this is your canopy. It's gotta pass these quality control inspections. And we obviously wanna have a good quality product and put a safe product out there. So talking to the other growers in the state, they're saying, "As wide as you can make those rows for working in between, the more sun the plants get, the more air circulation, the less issues you're gonna have, and you're gonna make a better quality product that's not gonna have problems with it."
The canopy has stayed the same.
The work areas.
The work area, yes.
With the bigger footprint.
Exactly, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And that still probably doesn't answer Charlie's question.
As I understand it, what was under the canopies before was, as I added up all of these numbers, it was 93,000 square feet. On the plan, it says that there's an additional 93,000 square feet that would be outside, so it's doubled. That was my only question. What's the area now as opposed to what it was?
Sorry, could be Charlie.
Yeah, that's the overall footprint, including the...
The overall growing area, whether it's inside or outside, now is twice as big as what it was before.
Yes, sir, and to kind of address that, in greenhouses, you can have, like, rolling tables and that kind of things.
Really, it doesn't concern us.
Okay.
We know, I don't know how you grow or which way you grow. The question is, is our jurisdiction to say, if we issue per, I believe our jurisdiction is the perimeter of the warehouse, 100,000 square feet, and this is 20. If he are, if he is to grow outside this perimeter, I would say it's a state issue. It's not with us, I mean...
You mean conservation?
No, I don't know. They're not near wetland. It's the state, if the state let them plant...
The state being the licensing authority for the...
Right, it's the, you know what I'm saying? So as zoning is concerned, I believe that the size of the layout, the parking, the building size, how you lay out your plants, and if you plant outside, I don't think we have a say to it. I don't know. Does somebody have the answer?
The only thing I gotta say is, okay, if we vote on this right now, I mean, I got 93,884 square feet with just these buildings, and you add this, another 90, another 52,000. We improve this. Now, what the state says, this says proposed growing area, so they have the capability of growing almost 200,000 square feet of product.
So that's, that's where the canopy...
Let me, let me explain. Let me give my theory.
I'm going by the law.
What's that?
By the law.
Right, exactly. That's what I'm asking. Our concern, how big are the buildings? Okay? If we issue a permit to grow or cultivating, all right? This is our thing. The number, we issue a size, 90,000 or 100,000, and 20, and parking lot, and driveway, and all this. This is zoning. And we issue a license to cultivate. He goes out and cultivates outside the yard. This is my question. I don't think we have a say. I think it's a state say. Either they let him or they don't let him.
Right.
If he takes these plants and put them outside, you can't tell him, you can't, I think. It's just like, say, you have the legal, how many, 20 plants you could have at your house? Whether you put them outside, inside, you have 20 plants. They love you, whatever, they love you.
12.
12? Okay, 12.
I don't know.
So you gotta take, throw eight away, you have 20.
But I still heard, I still heard testimony that they've been licensed for 100,000 feet of canopy. They don't care if it takes 10 acres or 10,000 acres. They're only allowed 100,000 square feet.
Of building?
Of canopy.
Of canopy.
Not building, not what, not land, not...
Of growth.
Canopy. That's why I asked, what's the canopy?
Yeah, it's confusing. It's not a structure.
The canopy is what's regulating what's, they could have five, 10,000, a million acres, they are only allowed to have...
100,000.
100,000 square feet of canopy.
Okay, so on that note, that's this right here, 94,000.
Right.
Why am I let, why am I worried about them 100 feet away?
I don't know why you're worried about it.
Taking extra trees down when they've got plenty of room to grow here? It sounds like to me, I mean, obviously, taking these trees down. If this place is designed not to have sunshine all the time, then why are we taking down more trees?
I, no, I believe you need sunshine, just like solar panels.
I know you need sunshine, but they're growing in here. This is what the state's saying they're growing.
Right, but they need the sun.
93,000. They're not saying they're growing in the extra 52,000. They're saying they're growing here. So we're taking trees out. On this side, Southwest is telling me, I know which way the sun rises. It's telling me they're trying to get more light on here, not here. Because if they did, they would've redesigned this and turned it where they need it.
I believe, again, we are concerned is the building. Okay, this is, before we get into this argument, the whole idea... Right, it's a discussion, exactly. However, they're here for a minor modification. If the argument can get bigger, we have to vote. It's a major modification or minor. Minor should've been done, the answer. So right now, we're gonna cut it short and see how we believe. If we believe it's major, then we could have them come back, and we could argue all we want for six months. That's going too much argument for a minor. So let's all take a vote.
Straw vote.
Yeah, and, no, no, real vote.
A real vote.
Say, do we think it's a minor modification or not? If we think it's major, let these people go do their thing. If it's minor, I guess it's a pass. Okay, so we have one, two, three, four. Mr. Conti will sit on this, that's five. Mr. Sample, you're sitting on Sandwich Road, right? Sandwich Road, you're on Sandwich Road? Okay, so Mr. Conti would sit on this one. All right, are we all in agreement?
Are you on it, too?
I'm on it, yes. Are we all in agreement? And just so you guys wanna argue anymore? It does make sense, doesn't it? What's that?
We're taking a vote right now for minor or major.
Minor or major?
Could I add one thing for the vote?
Go ahead.
Basically, the 100,000 feet isn't changing. So, you know, we could, we could get 100,000 feet of canopy in year to year point, but it's not, it's gonna be packed in there. So it's just a matter of getting more quality going. That's all I wanted to add, thank you.
So the guy's coming here to clear more trees, and therefore, and apparently, he wants the sun or plant, and I don't care what he does with it, whether we let it, we gotta, we think it's minor or major. So anything else before we go for a vote?
You want it in the form of a motion, or?
Yes, we need a motion.
Make a motion that we, that the modification would, to be considered a minor modification?
Okay, do I have a second on Jim's motion?
I'll second.
Veronica seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Veronica? Aye. Aye for Walter?
No.
Okay, it passes, minor modification, done. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Next one is Mr., we're gonna jump one. Four, zero, one. Mr., we're gonna go to 25-20, 10 Jordan Road. Is anybody here from Sandwich Road?
Yeah, Walter.
Who?
My client, sorry, my client.
Are you, are you gonna present them?
Yeah, my client, yeah.
Oh, they're here, okay. Okay, 10 Jordan Road. Mr. Conti and Mr. Sample will sit in this matter. You, Mr., we take this Jake's chair, we take my chair. I gotta accuse myself of conflict, but you guys go ahead.
So this is...
And myself also.
For the, for 10 Jordan Road?
Jordan Road, or he said Sandwich?
No, we're not going to Sandwich. We're doing 10 Jordan Road.
Jordan Road, I'm fine.
Okay. So, so we got one, two, three, four, five.
We have five, okay.
Five members, the hearing's already been open. Make your comments.
All right. Hi, everyone. I'm Attorney Jillian Morton, here for Mr. Alkazan, the owner of the property. And question, what we're seeking today is a special permit from the zoning by law regarding dogs. So in our district here, which is R60, if you have three or more dogs on less than five acres, you have to have a, like, a hobby kennel. Mr. Alkazan has six dogs. Two, he's had a adult dog, male dog, for six years, and the other female dog for two years. They had puppies. So they have four puppies. And he, his intention is to keep those dogs, not sell them, not breed them, not have any more. And in your packet, you can kind of see the animals and the structure that he built. It's fully enclosed. The property in question is on the end of a cul-de-sac. So looking at the detriment to the neighborhood, there's no butters in the back, as well as the animals are in the fence that he's built. Mr. Alkazan is the owner of GP East here in Wareham, a businessman, employs a lot of local people. He'd love to keep his animals and grant this license and show that it's not detrimental to the neighborhood. Open for any questions?
I have, I've had the opportunity to look through the very well-prepared package you presented. I have to start out with a couple of questions. On the second page of your, or the third page of your argument, if you will, we list six items. Number four, appropriate sewage treatment facilities. Does that mean that the kennel actually has a septic system?
So I think it's really about, when you have animals, you know, six dogs, making sure that you're taken care of.
Yeah, I noticed that it has a cement floor and all that, so, and I've seen the pictures, so it actually has a septic treatment facility for the doggy poo?
I'm not sure if it has a separate septic plan for the dogs, but it's making sure that the excrement from the animals isn't affecting the wildlife and conservation. It doesn't have a problem with it.
Okay. Well, a system doesn't necessarily have to be...
Exactly, that's just in...
I don't mean like a Title V all in the...
That's right. I don't think they... Yeah, protecting that drinking water, making sure it wouldn't affect anything there.
That was, that was the only thing that stuck out at me. I didn't know if you knew the answer to that. I'm gonna turn to members of the board. I'll start with Walter. Do you have any questions?
I would, if, if I vote on this, I would only, I would have stipulations because we've owned kennels in the town of Wareham. We've been shut down now. I've owned, me and my father, for over 40 years. We have septic, hot water, cold water, concrete, completely enclosed building, insulated, to keep the noises from the neighbors. And we had to go through the whole kennel procedure because we had more than four dogs. If I approve this, there will be, at any given time, no more than six dogs, because...
You wanna put, you wanna put conditions?
Because I don't wanna hear a litter. I don't wanna hear that, because litter, you gotta get rid of dogs somehow. We didn't breed dogs. We bought them and trained them. And we had to go through the town procedures for over four dogs. I don't have a problem with it, but it cannot exceed six, or you're gonna have to do either commercial kennel license or a hobby kennel license. And you have to take precautions to do it.
Think those would be fair conditions to impose. Anything else?
No, that was it.
Veronica?
Are the dogs spayed or neutered?
I don't have that information, I can get that from the client, I believe the female dog is now. Because they did, they did, the puppies were a surprise. But he's, he's owned dogs for thirty-plus years, I can check on that for you.
How many females and male, or two males?
I don't have that information either, I can get that for you too, but I would assume that that would be something they didn't want, they don't want any more dogs, so...
And I, and they did build quite an extensive facility.
Yeah, yeah, the fence is very tall, obviously.
Richard, I'm gonna leave you, uh, go ahead, Chris.
Did a very good job with, with the package you presented, and I, I really don't see any problems.
Christopher, uh, Richard, sorry.
So you did say that there was not gonna be any breeding, but there was one accident already.
There was one accident.
So how do we, how do we know there's no more accidents, is there?
Yeah, so like I said...
Some kinda safe, I mean, what, along with Walter's statement and his, his suggestion to put some side stipulations on it. How, how, how do we have?
I think that's...
I guess the only thing we could do would be condition it to a maximum of six dogs and if, in the event...
Just go with it.
The animal control, right, would be the enforcement on that, I would think, if there were more animals.
I don't know, what's...
Yeah, they would.
Right, so the animal control could go over, if there was puppies.
Come in and remove the animals.
Yep.
So let me, let me ask...
At the expense.
Walter, you seem to have, um, dog experience, expertise, whatever. How long after a dog is born would it wanna stay with its mother?
Well, you can't separate them by the law, it's, at six weeks, they could be separated, but typically it's eight to twelve weeks, because they wanna be weaned from the mother. Because dogs, imagine somebody taking your kid away after four months, and they're totally on their own. They go through separation if you take them to work.
So, what I'm, what I'm, the reason for my question is, if we're gonna condition, uh, limit six dogs, in the event of another surprise, we'd, we'd have to say that we'd have to provide at least twelve weeks, from what I'm hearing from you, for the, for the surprise to remain.
Animal control wouldn't remove them either.
So the condition would be that if there were a surprise, that they couldn't, they couldn't be housed there for more than six months, what would you, what would you feel is a reasonable time?
I would, I wouldn't even go that long, I'd go to the adoption period, so if it's eight to twelve weeks, eight to twelve weeks after, they can be separated via for sale, animal control comes and removes them.
But during the eight to twelve, they, they're there, they're there, eight to twelve, right? And then after twelve, what's a reasonable time, that's three months, after twelve, after three months, what's a reasonable time to get rid of the surprise?
Maybe thirty days after, that gives them extra month, extra month.
So if we condition it to sixteen weeks, how do you, how, how does that fit with what would be right by the animals and by the town?
I mean, like I said, if it's twelve weeks, if you're talking twelve weeks from the day of birth...
Yep. And then four weeks...
I'd give them another four weeks, that's only sixteen weeks. That's enough time for the separation of the puppies, enough time for them to be self-sufficient and be on their own. They're, they're already ready for sale, but if you let them go longer, they're selling them, so now, I have another accident next year, they deliver. I got six months for them, three months, we extra, we gave them, they can get rid of the dogs, no, they need to be...
So they can start selling them during the twelve, but they just can't...
Legally, you're not supposed to take them.
You're not supposed to...
If you're to purchase a dog, then they, if you get caught, you could get in some serious trouble separating them under age...
Sixteen weeks seems to be the magic number to me.
I'm saying no more than sixteen weeks.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm not understanding, I thought we said that there wouldn't be any more, there would be a limit. And now we're, now we're talking about, if there is an accident, how long they can stay there, so I'm, I'm just...
Yeah, and we put that the dogs have to be spayed and neutered.
It's up to you guys.
I'm just trying to clarify, because I thought we were talking about, she said that there wasn't gonna be any more, but there was an accident, so I said, how do we?
Yeah, I can tell he doesn't want them.
How do we prevent the accident? Because there's not gonna be any more than so many dogs on there, and now we're talking about giving them sixteen weeks, I don't understand, I'm a little confused.
I'm not sure if that's ever gone in a special permit.
I think, say it again?
Has that ever gone in a special permit, forcing the, them to spay or neuter?
You don't know if...
I just know he doesn't want any more, so, I, like, I could make a call and probably check to see if they've been spayed or neutered.
Yeah, if he doesn't want any more, he has probably spayed or neutered them, yes. Either one of the, either the males are neutered or the females are spayed, I mean, that's the only way, he would not be having puppies now, I would think.
Well, the, and the puppies are a little bit older now, so they might be at the age that they can, they can get spayed and neutered.
They're at the, they're at the...
So, I know that he doesn't want any more.
Yeah.
And you can't stop them.
I'm not gonna stop a Jimmy Sheppard, this got something on his mind.
You're not stopping. I've seen a lot of, I've seen dogs go through doors when they're in...
Oh, jeez.
Well, it's, what's the pleasure of the board, uh, somebody has to make a motion, or, I mean, if you want more further discussion, but it sounds to me like it sounds to me like the board is okay with the six dogs, but I hear concern about the potential future. Does the board feel as though they want to mandate the six dogs be spayed or neutered as appropriate, or does the board wanna mandate that if there is an accident, any litter will be gone within sixteen weeks? That's... I, I don't care either way.
My opinion is to grant the six dogs. And that's it, no more than six. If something happens, that's another issue, he has to deal with that, but we're voting, I would vote just six dogs, period.
Yeah, I think it's under animal control.
I would give them sixteen weeks, I wouldn't do nothing, I'd do six dogs, that's all you can have at any given time on that kennel, and that counts, puppies. So if you have a litter of twelve, and you already had the six, twelve gotta go, whether it's the adults or something, but there're only be six at that kennel.
So if there is a, a surprise, that dog's removed immediately, and they have them somewhere else, but they're not staying on that property?
Place them somewhere, or place them in a kennel or wherever, but only six on the property at a time.
Is that a motion, or is that just an opinion?
That's my opinion, we can do that as a motion.
Would you?
I do have a couple of questions.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, before you make a motion, Veronica's got...
Um, what, what brought him before the board, I mean, because the dogs are how old?
The puppies?
Yeah.
I think they're like, so we, we applied early, and then there was kinda delays, and we didn't have the quorum, I think that the puppies are a few months old, probably about four months old. And I, I'm not sure if it was the, the dog officer or someone on the board, but just saying that, in your zoning district, you need a special permit for this. So, you know, I talked to the building commissioner and, and moved forward.
Based on the amount...
He doesn't, I mean, he's, he owns a business, a successful business, he doesn't want any, any problems with the town.
I don't see anybody here opposing it, and I guess that would be my main concern, you know, because if the neighbors are hearing the noise, or what was the reason that, that he came?
Yep.
You know, to, to get the permit, but there's no one here that, obviously, and there are no, there was no correspondence?
No, I didn't receive anything from anyone opposing.
So it doesn't sound like there's any opposition to it.
And my thinking is, is knowing how it works, is, he had two, he was good.
Yeah.
Then he had a litter, put him over the limit, that makes his recreational dogs go to a kennel, because the amount. It's funny, I had, we had to go through the same thing.
Yeah, he had one dog, and the dog, and the dog was lonely, so he got him a girlfriend, and she was a slut.
You know, they're not like us, I mean, if I had six kids at one time...
He was a whore, something, I don't know. So...
I wouldn't be here.
Before we go into any motions or anything, I should ask if there's anybody here from the public that has any comments, either in favor or opposed. At some point, I read recently, as recently as this week, we're gonna actually have a live feed so that people can make comments from their home, but we don't have that luxury tonight, I see nobody in the room. I saw somebody peeking around the corner out of the hall a couple times, but it doesn't appear they're here for this, this issue, so I think the next step would be to, unless there's further discussion, I'd, I'd be looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing?
I second.
Motion has been made and seconded to close the public hearing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? It passes unanimously to close the public hearing, now, I'd be looking for a motion to either approve or deny, I, I think approval, if it was voted down, that would be a denial, so I'm looking for a motion, a motion on this matter.
Walter Cruz, I motion to approve this matter, with a limitation of, there can only be six dogs on the property at all times.
Do I have a second?
A second.
And is this, are these, this motion is seconded with standard conditions?
Yes, with standard conditions.
Motion's been made and seconded with standard conditions to approve the application for a maximum of six dogs, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, passes unanimously, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you for making it easy, giving us plenty of material for the sidebar.
And good luck.
It's always easier when there's adequate information, you know?
Yep.
Okay, Nazir.
We got plenty of kennel stuff that we ever needs.
Yeah.
We're done.
What kind of dogs did you have?
German shorthairs.
You did have German, yeah.
We do have something to sign for you, like...
You did, oh, wow.
Do we, do we need to sign something for her, if you wanna get it? And you have, in the folder, any, anything, we just, um...
Pay attention?
We, uh, pardon me, no, we wanted, we granted her the permission to have six dogs on the site.
Alright.
So...
So is that a special permit?
Yeah.
Just like some finding and stuff?
Yeah.
Alright. So that, that passes five zero zero? Yeah? Okay, very good, now we're going back to twenty-two dash twenty, two thirty-eight, two forty, Sandwich Road. Alright. Need name and address for the record?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, my name is Fred Manix, one eighty-eight North Street, Boston, Mass.
Jillian Morton, one eighty-four Main Street, Wareham.
Okay, public hearing still open, we have Mister Morrison did not attend, Mister Sample attended. Mister Morrison didn't attend, so Mister Conkey will sit on his chair, if he misses another meeting, he can't sit no more, Mister Conkey will continue.
Okay.
But if he, if he reviewed the tape and testified he reviewed it, he could jump back and, under the mullin door.
Alright. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I pass these over?
Yes, dispatch.
Now the add, close herself.
Right, correct. And Mister Sample's in the new chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. We, uh, do we have another?
No, I think there's only one.
I guess the...
Alright, so who's gonna start?
Well, uh, let me start by saying what we're trying to do here tonight. We're not looking for any kind of answers, I was kinda looking for direction.
Right.
And, um, I, I put a little blurb in the front here, showing the location of the property and relationship to the other properties. And Plymouth Road, this is just off the assessors map. And what we'd like to do is, uh, a couple of things. My attorney has, has a letter she submitted regarding the question that came up about the, uh, the density, which I, I think she can explain, if you, if you wanna talk about that. The other thing I, I wanna say is that, we met with the building commissioner yesterday. He's not officially on until next week, but we, uh...
Oh, the new one?
The new building commissioner, because he's the, he's the person who would determine how many parking spaces are required.
Right.
So, uh, the, uh, the prior commissioner is what we based our determinations on, and we wanted to make sure that the, the new commissioner was, uh, in the same state of mind on it. Anyhow, uh, he said it'd be free to speak to you guys about, and ladies, about sixty parking spaces was his determination that this project would require.
The new commissioner?
The new commissioner.
We should be getting that letter, once he's officially started.
I, I just wanted to see if I could come here and talk about that, the reason I need to, needed that was to develop the site plan. You know, you really can't do much without knowing how many parking spaces are required, so we're not prepared to give you that site plan right now, we just found out about it yesterday, but we'll, we'll put that together.
Right, now, did he tell you about the, the employee parking?
We, we calculated the employee parking in that, in that parking, yes, that's, that's the total parking required. I don't know, he, he may, he may explain it in the letter, if he doesn't, I'll, I'll explain it, you know, once I get it, I haven't seen the letter yet.
Was, was the parking underneath at some point?
Yes, that, that's, that's counter, yeah, there's forty, uh, we did a little modification to the building, so from forty-nine, went down to forty-eight parking inside, so that's still, that's still the same.
It's, it's very critical to have a site plan.
Oh, yes.
So he's saying sixty parking, including employees, is good?
That's right. He said about twelve employees, including...
How many employees?
He said about twelve, I believe, or ten to twelve?
We, we did, I, we did the calculation and, and, you know, with the, with the method of, of two, two units, one parking space for every two units, that was the ratio for residents. And then we discussed the, the employees, uh, he, he pointed out that he was familiar with the, uh, you know, assisted living and nursing homes, he'd, he'd done a lot of work that way. We discussed the employees, and we came up with twelve employees, we had a discussion about it, which, which brought us to fifty-five, and he asked me, uh, can you do, can you do sixty on, on, on the, uh, the lot, and I said, yes, I can.
Okay, but how about maybe visiting nurses, visitors?
Well, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna provide more than sixty, but, but that's the requirement, you know, we had to, had to have a basis for that.
Right, let me ask you something, on the plan, you know how it dips down, and you have this empty space? Why don't you use this for extra parking instead of empty? Remember Mister Sample was saying why this is empty? Because the elevation of the road...
Oh, no, no, that, that's not unexcavated, that, that, that was to show for the, uh, the kitchen and the, and the, no, that's not empty space. It was, it was that way in the plan, we had this discussion before, the plan just didn't, you know, point it all out, it, it didn't lay it all out, but that's, that space is being used, you'll see it in the new plan, the plan will...
So they're gonna be used for what?
The dining room.
Dining room, the kitchen, uh, 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 an activity room, in the first wall, right off the lobby.
Okay, dining room for the only residents? For the residents?
Yeah, just for the residents, yeah, of course.
And what's the solarium for?
The solarium is for, for, you know, people to...
Recreation, no food, no eating and stuff?
Well, I think, I think, uh, Jim was mentioning about, uh, a small kitchen up there for snacks and stuff like that, we, we're gonna incorporate that in, but no, not, not not a dining area, I, I don't think that that, that would be, it's far better.
Okay, let me ask a quick question, what's that facade, it's, what's, um, the Madame Architect, right?
Yes.
What's the facade made out of? Is it siding, brick, do you have?
Triton walls, what are they?
The, uh, the, uh, the new design is that the, um, base would be a shingle.
Right.
The, um, the other flat areas would be, uh, eight-inch, um, clapper.
Hardi plank, hardi board?
Hardy board, yeah.
Eight-inch?
Yeah, just because it's a big enough building that it, the...
They make them eight-inch, I didn't think you could do more than five?
I think they make an eight, yeah.
Is that right? Okay.
Uh, ten, yeah, 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 but eight-inch would be, yeah.
And the bar here, we haven't figured out what that's gonna be yet.
The bottom's what?
We're not quite sure what that's gonna be, but it's, it's, um...
The, the, the plan on the bottom, uh, it shows in the gray down, on this, this photo that you see. It's almost like a Wayne's cutting, uh, it's cutting, you know, we're looking at a, um, just a flat panel, because it's gonna be all landscaping along that, there's a planter planned for that, that whole bottom row. And, and, uh, we figured that that would be kind of a flat panel, you know, like a, like you'd see in a library or something like that. Probably hardi plank, because hardi plank is a good thing to use, it's, it's fireproof, and would, uh, would have some kind of a, a raised panel look at the bottom, and most of it would be hidden, then we go up and, and we, we try to put some shingles in the base to, to face the neighborhood, I mean, the left-hand side of what you're looking at, uh, Mister Chairman, is Plymouth Road. The right-hand side is on Sandwich Road. And then we, uh, we tried to get a cape card look, we weren't quite sure, uh, how to do it, but we figured shingles at the top, and, and then we were gonna shingle the base. And then, it would almost look, and then, the, the biggest feature, and if you go into the other, other plan, the other drawing, is we put a gable at the other end of the building, almost like an attic, to try to give it more of a, uh, a house look, it's, it's in the third, it's in the third drawing, from that perspective. And it, uh, I think it looks kinda nice, you know, it covers up, it, it makes it look like a, more of a residential building in the end, rather than the comment that was made that it looked like a prison, so we, we tried, we took that to heart. And, um, that gable end would be on the, uh, Route twenty-eight, on Cranbury Highway.
Do you know, uh, do you know the APS building, when you leave town on the left?
Yeah.
I drove by it the other day, and whoever did the architect did a beautiful job, no offense. I like how they did the top, they did like a shed dormer, it really broke the height.
Yep. I'll take a look, I'm not familiar with it.
She'll show you, are you from town, you're not from town?
I'm not, yeah.
So she'll show, it's on the way out.
Okay.
Which building, sir?
The, the medical building.
The APS.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the, the one on, uh, just before you get to the...
The one by the police department?
Yeah, the police department, the newer building.
The medical billing building?
Right, 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 okay, I know what you mean, yeah.
It is four stories.
Uh-huh.
But you can't really feel it.
Yeah, yeah.
Because they integrate the brick with the siding, and they did that shed dormer, and it really, you... This is a huge building, but you can't tell.
Right, that's what we're looking forward to do here, I mean, this is, this is the idea, and, again, these are development drawings, we're trying to get an idea, if you, if you like the direction we're going, we'll, we'll, we'll certainly take a look at that building, and, and...
Well, the, the direction you're doing, I guess, if it's allowed, it's allowed.
But they made some changes substantially to the building, I think, that I...
Yeah, this was what was presented.
Right, yeah, that's...
Yeah, I think this was definitely much...
Right, but I still think...
Makes it look more townhouse, but I think...
It is, but it's a long building, you need to break it, it's two hundred and sixty-four feet.
What, what we did, what we did, Mister Chairman, and, and the rest of the board, is we took the, if, if you look at that, the front corner was taken off, we, we basically took the ninety-degree off the whole front of the building, the entrance became recessed. And if you look at it, it's even, it's even got a recess bay look to it, to try to diminish that, and, and, uh, again, I was down, I was down at the property, uh, well, just Tuesday, I was, I was here in town all day, measuring the trees and, and the location, we, we're gonna get a landscape architect, but we have to give him some direction. And, and what, um, we're gonna be able to save the trees on Plymouth Road, the way it's designed. And then, uh, the trees, I think there's one tree that may have to go, not, not the big one, the small, the smallest tree would have to go for the driveway on Sandwich Road, but the other three trees, which are huge, would can remain, and it would cover, it would break up quite a bit of that, and as a matter of fact, on the, on the drawing I gave you of the, uh, I guess it's, it's the appraisal map. And, and you can, you can see, I gotta get my glasses on, what I'm talking about, across the street from, uh, first of all, two thirty-nine Sandwich Road, that faces the old wreck of a house now, that would be completely gone, that's why I put the X on there, that house is gonna be gone, and that would be all landscaped. We, we moved...
The yellow house.
The yellow house, yeah, the old yellow house. And then, across the street from number two forty-one and two forty-three Sandwich Road, those are where the big trees are. And then, further down, uh, the, the, the property is kinda on the left-hand side of this whole thing, and, and number two forty-five and two forty-nine would be facing just the back corner of the building, the two forty-five and two forty-nine would face the, again, the open area that we're leaving, and, and it's, it's existing, but I, I'll get into that more, there'd be a better presentation than this, I just wanted to come here tonight and make sure that we, we caught what you were saying.
Through the, through the chair, so, on this, you've got it all yellow and everything for us, thank you, it makes it easy. I'm familiar with the property, so, this, this, um, square that's labeled two forty, that goes on lot two forty-six?
Yeah, it's, I don't know what that is, that's supposed to be lot, I, I don't know what that is, that's... Yeah, I don't know what that is. That's supposed to be lot... I don't know what that is. That's a mistake.
I know that, I see the house that you Xed out. That's the one that's been boarded up for a couple of weeks now.
Right, that's the old house, yeah. I think it's been a month.
And then the whole rest of it, there's some foundations and stuff on it. And then down at the corner, there's a little cape building. I know there is, but that doesn't show on this plan. It's odd.
It is odd. I think that they, I don't know why, two forty is the lot, which is the point eighty-eight acre and one oh four is two...
I can tell you those...
The little real estate office was half on your lot and half on this.
Those G I S maps are often shifted where the actual house is in the structure, the line is.
Well, no, this is the, I don't know what two forty is. I think they might have shifted the house. I don't know why. That's like that. That came off the website of the town, so. But it kind of gives you an idea of what we were talking about before, you know, with the houses around there. I know there was some talk about, I don't know which, there was a lady who spoke about the parking, you know, coming out and backing into the highway. I spoke with Mrs. Dixon on Tuesday. I told her to come to the meeting if she wanted to, you know. She'd made her aware of the meeting, told her to tell everybody if they... That's the house behind us, the one point oh two acre.
Okay.
Number five. That's... So...
And up the road, I've seen that yard.
Yeah. Well, I don't want to get into that, but hopefully if we build this, we'll do something to screen the pool. So what happened is I explained to her and I showed her that our intention is not to use Plymouth Road at all, only for the fire department. The new plan will show a concrete apron, not a curb cut, but just an apron, because the fire truck doesn't want to sink in the mud. It's an emergency exit. And I'm pretty sure that the fire department will give us permission to put a gate on there. It's a manned facility, so we can have an electronic gate that could open. I spoke to my fire department, my fire alarm people, and they can put a module on that gate, so if the fire alarm goes off, it's a fire. It opens the gate automatically. If it can be something simple, even with a chain lock, I mean, the fire department could come, and then they can snap the lock to leave. No one's gonna get caught there, but I'd like to do the gate and get their permission. We moved, I don't have the plan in front of me, but what happened is when we moved this corner of the building back, we took the forty, the ninety, made it into a forty-five, it allowed us to have more room for the fire truck to come in and out of the facility, basically on that road right there, Sandwich Road. I think it's gonna work out nice. I just had to wait until I got the parking requirements. The reason for the parking requirements, I'll put as many as I can fit, but I don't want to go over the sixty-five foot, sixty-five percent pervious surface. I like to maintain that, not looking for a...
And you still have plans out in the back to put a little separate building for the...
We took the chairman's advice and looked at that, and we did. We moved it into the triangle. I don't have it in front of me, but we moved it into the triangle, which allowed us to put a driveway, a much longer place for the truck to back up. It worked out nice. We put it into that corner, so I appreciate that thought. But I'm not prepared to present it. I'm not here to present the plan. We'll have all the things that were required. I doubt that we'll have it ready for the next meeting, probably the following meeting.
The eighteen, next meeting.
Yeah, I don't think I can...
I know. We have one meeting in November.
Just one, yeah. I'd love to get this, it's been a long...
No problem.
Been a long road. I'd like to get done with. I practically cannot have the thing a hundred percent ready for you at that time, but we'll let you know.
Just keep thinking about, oh, I'm sorry.
How does the super moratorium?
We, I am told we're on the list. We have...
They are on the list. They were coming before in the moratorium.
We came in before the moratorium, and we're all set there. I know what it was, the water department. My engineer spoke to the water department, got the test, they got a flow test. Apparently you have some issues with the pumping. Things are pretty low in town. The pressure's down. We passed a test. At this low point, he felt that we might need a pump, but it's an all-time low, and he suggested that we do another test.
They did the modeling? They modeled the water pressure?
I believe they did, yeah. The engineer went directly to the water department, and he got them, and I have that report. I don't think there's anything else that I can add to it.
I'm just curious how the number of twelve employees came up. What did you, are you planning on having like nurses and aides?
No, what this facility does is it has a PCA, personal care assistant. And the average around the country, there's no requirement in Massachusetts. The average around the country is one PCA for every twenty-three residents. So, and that's not memory care. Memory care requires two people at all times, two employees at the memory care unit. And they can get a waiver from the state to go to one, but we're assuming two. So the idea was two memory care. We're gonna have some sort of memory care here. And one PCA for every, each floor, you know, each floor, basically, four floors. There's only, there aren't that many residents in the first floor, but we count on it that way. So that gives us a six. Then a couple of people to run the place, a couple of people to like a nurse. We came up with twelve.
Well, so, because I have a list of people that I was thinking you may need for this, just... You said you're gonna have two kitchen and facilities, like, almost like a banquet type thing. So everybody's gonna have their own kitchen and can prepare their own meals, and those kitchens are just for incidental gatherings, or is that like...
Excuse me for buttoning in, but I've got some experience with assisted facilities. And the residents have the option of cooking a hundred percent of their meals themselves, but they also often offered an option of signing onto a meal plan and going down to a common dining room and being served a meal.
So that's, oh, that's what I was wondering. So...
Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, so my thing was, I was trying to think of like, oh geez, the employees. So you're gonna need people for food preparation, for cleaning staff, for maintenance, and for care of the residents, basically.
Yeah, we discussed that with David. We went, he was like, is there gonna be people who cook? And we kind of went through the whole list.
Went through the whole thing, and that's why the five more people would be like maybe... I think cleaning staff would be, one of the things I did, let me back up. The reason for the maintenance building is there's a couple of parking spaces inside there, and there'd be some spaces beside the maintenance building. That's really for maintenance personnel. Very often they have training for people that could be taking place in there. We kind of have a plan for that maintenance building to be more active and keep some employees parked over there. We have four parking spaces for the kitchen, behind the kitchen area. We have eight visitor parking spaces.
And that's not in your total of...
Well, my total would be, I think the last time I came in here was sixty-six or something like that. You know, if we're required to have sixty, and I can fit in sixty-two, sixty-four, I'll do it. When we did the movement of the maintenance building, we have room for expansion there, some overflow parking. It's just like a big driveway in front of you. We made it a ninety-degree, you know, you go in, it's kind of, the driveway goes past the maintenance building, so that there's kind of a big area in front of the maintenance building, so people could park there, wouldn't interfere with the fire lane or anything like that. You know, it's kind of an overflow parking area. One of the things I did, and it's not scientific, I was here, when was I here, Tuesday or Wednesday? The last time we came for a meeting, I think we came to Mr. Buckland's office. I stayed here for dinner. I went to the lobster pot. It's gonna kill me to keep going there. And the food is fantastic, but I just eaten too much lobster. So what happens is, seven o'clock at night, I drive by All American, and there were eleven cars in the parking lot, all their parking surface. There's eleven cars there. One of them belonged to the American that's got the logo on the side. And that's a Wednesday night at seven o'clock, so I'm assuming people are home. It's been my experience in talking to people in the industry, they don't, the residents kind of give up on their cars. They don't need them. They have a van. I think, Mr. Buckland, we talked about it, Ken, way back, about having some form of a van to get people to... I think All American has that. It's not a van, it's a car, but they have a company car, and they must take people around. I don't know what they do. I didn't talk to them.
They take them to their doctor's appointment.
Right. We would presumably do the same thing. We have room for that, and that would be something. But I think, I have the feeling that the parking requirement will be adequate for what we're gonna do. And again, I like to stay away from that. Sixty-five percent pervious surface is something we'd like to maintain. I think it gives us more green, more grass. We could go, I don't want to go on all night about it, but I've done a lot of thought about this. We could go to a gravel lock paver system if we had to, in the grassy areas, even put that, they call it turf, turf parking. You could do that and still maintain your stuff, but we'd rather not do that if we can avoid it, keep more green. The front of the building, we put the building, we set the building back a little bit further to have more planting area in front. And the sides of the building basically are all planted. And, but I'm basically here for the idea that we try to make it, I don't know what a cape card look is, is something that you, it's hard to do. I will, yeah. Plagiarism is what I practice. You know, I've been doing it my whole life. I look at other properties and why not? It's somebody who designed something that's good, and we can work on it, and we'll take a look at that and incorporate whatever we can.
Because it's such a tall building, like Mr. Cruz mentioned, we don't want it to look like a jail.
No, no, I don't either.
Have some character, you know. It'd be nice to have some character to break it off.
Well, I hope that...
Some brick, and it really makes a big difference.
We could, you know, we could do something like that on the insert area, and I mean, I could give you some alternatives. I'm open to it. And I think what would happen is, I don't want to over-design something at this stage of the game, because it's kind of hard to do. These are design development drawings. I mean, brick and clapboard and shingles, I'm not sure if those three combine that well. I'll look at that building if that's what they did.
I think shingles and brick would be nice.
Yeah. I don't know if I can...
And clapboard, or brick and clapboard would look very sharp.
Yeah, yeah. I just think, you know, and I looked at the layout of the land. You know, looking at the building, the way we're looking at it, it's by itself. But in the land, there's an awful lot of that building that, it won't face the road. It goes back. Some of the bulk of the building goes right back towards Plymouth Road. You won't see that.
Right.
And the only thing you see is a couple of hundred feet of building in the front. And we took about twenty or thirty feet off by cutting the corner. The corner now is, I'm sorry, I'm turning my back to you guys, but the corner now is cut right off, so that makes a big difference.
Exactly. It makes it nice and easy to...
We didn't lose too much in the unit, and we put porches, we emphasized the porches in the back also. I don't know how often they get used in the weather like this, but it looks nice. So I think we'd like to stick with that in the back, so it makes the building look less bulky, even though it is a good-sized building.
Well, I believe, so last time, you wanted to see what the board feels about the project. And I did suggest to you to come with a special permit, which is, of course, if we feel it's not detrimental, that's kind of by right. I would come in two separate permits for your variance and the project itself.
Okay.
I won't comment about the variance of the solarium, but if you need a variance for putting the maintenance house in the triangle, I don't have a problem with it, because that'll add up more for the fire truck to back up and stuff. But I want to start talking to the board and see where everybody, which way they'd like to go. And, I mean, just not to go right now, but have some suggestion. But I wanted to go to the audience. This gentleman came here last time, and he missed you. Sir, you're here for that project. Did you want to ask a question about it?
I did. I...
Come forward. Sit on that chair, state your name. I know you came, waited last time, and you left empty-handed. I need your name for the...
Sure. So my name is Reverend Gray, and I am the pastor there at Emmanuel Church of the Nazarene in Campina and Rogers Avenue, which is fronted, well, our entranceway or the road there at Campina is right across the property that's in question or that's being asked about in development. So I'm coming late to this, and I apologize, in that I haven't seen any real, the plans in that. So I'm speaking from a point of ignorance, but of concern, and I want to be educated. I don't want to be ignorant. But obviously, and I'm, you know, the preachers and priests all talk in, you know, alliterations in that, so I'll give you three. How about that?
That sounds good to me.
Okay. Is speed, surfaces, and signage. Those three things are things that, at least in my mind, as far as a nice project, big project like this. And by the way, I'm all for assisted livings, and we have ministry, and people need those kind of places and those as well. But my concerns are these for speed, and I know other members in the community that live there came to the first meeting and mentioned that about coming down Sandwich Road through the intersection there. It is quite fast. It is quite dangerous, and one of them actually got rear-ended there just a couple of weeks or a month ago. So that's a concern, especially having a large facility. And in the worst-case scenarios, like we all planned, let's say it's a busy day at the center. We've got cleaning crews. We've got family members visiting. It's a holiday. We're gonna see grandma. We're gonna see grandpa. We're gonna go in there. Or it's a regular day. They're going out for van visits, to doctor visits and such. I can see a lot of traffic, and if the ingress, egress-type exit and all that's coming right there, and the road, of course, to Campina is right across the street as well. I'm not sure if it's understanding as well. That's just the speed in coming down that road. But also, on Sunday, we'll have fifty cars coming out of that road. We have four other ministries that meet at our church. We have Turning Point. Many of you might be familiar with Turning Point, which is a day community that we have people come in all the time up and down that road. We also have Father Bill's, too. So we have other organizations that meet regularly at our church. So there's a fair amount of traffic already that most people may not be aware of, but it's constant and continuous through that road. So my concern, again, for speed, if there's, we have a function there tonight, people are coming out during the day. It's a lot of traffic that comes kind of bottlenecked into that area, coming out of Campina. And now we've got vans, whatever, people, rescue vehicle, whatever. It's a busy intersection. So that was my first concern of speed and traffic there. Second is signage, that if this process goes through, I would certainly hope, and I would really almost beg for, that there would be adequate signage on the road that would alert people, slow down. A crosswalk would be appropriate there and be put in, I would hope and expect, because if we have members that are there that may want to come to church and worship, that's the worst place to try and cross the road. You better run. So I would like signage, and I would like that if it's going to proceed. I'm just putting that out there. I know this has not been approved. But so, as I said, speed, signage, and surfaces. And, you know, the last part of that is this. I've been looking to the town about repaving our road, because we have so much traffic on it. Campina Way and Rogers, and if they're assigned to the town. So if that can be opened up, or if the entranceway, as it's created and designed, can account for, again, turning, traffic, and all of these things other than just an entrance. So those are the three things that I really had a concern about, as far as volume, traffic, and being alert to those things as it's designed and laid out. Again, I apologize. I haven't seen what the present layout is that, so I'm speaking from a point of ignorance to that, other than, okay, that. I don't know on the road. I know what the lots and plots are. We'd almost contemplated purchasing that whole property as to expand the church and building a new church, so...
Where is the church, sir? Across the street?
So it's right, if you're sitting at the intersection to head down Cranbury Highway at the corner of Sixth and Sandwich, you can see it right there. It's right across.
Will you go through Rogers Ave to get to you?
Campina Way goes to Rogers, yep. That's the only way to get into that neighborhood there. So it's only one way in and one way out. That's, so again, we have a lot of traffic that comes in. And then if, on Sunday, we may have sixty cars coming out of there, that's gonna be, it's a lot.
So what's your busiest day? You say Sunday?
Sunday, of course. We do have other events during the week, not during COVID. But, you know, we're growing as a congregation, which is a good thing. God's doing some great things for families and community. And Turning Point is growing. They're coming back up. Most of you are familiar. Father Bill's providing a, you know, for homeless and placement in town. So we have a lot of organizations that utilize our facilities as well, not just us. So that was just the concerns that I wanted to express as the designs are being created and looked at.
I'm not a traffic engineer, but if fifty cars, in how many, how, and what's it take for the fifty cars within the... Within the hour they leave, within ten minutes, two hours, how's that work?
Probably within, I mean, not, everybody's out at once, but, um, I, I, gee, I guess, I guess maybe half hour or.
Half hour.
Yeah, I mean, so it's not all lined up at once and everybody's waiting. I mean, if it got to that point, we'd have to look at hiring a, a, you know, off-duty detail officer to direct traffic, which, that's a cost and expense that right now we can't afford. But, um, if it came to that point, we probably would have to look at that because traffic would be a concern in safety.
Right, right, okay. Uh, crosswalk, uh, it's a good idea. Uh, that's something they have to apply with the state because that's state road, so.
And I kinda, I kinda thought that.
Right, I mean, if the state would grant it for them, I'm sure they'd do it. I mean, just some paint, it's nice and easy. Signage, I'm sure in the plans, we're gonna have to say no left turn, stop sign, no right turn, whatever. When, when they come with the final plan, they'll have a lot of detailed town engineering, we'll go through that. We did discuss last time about traffic engineer, but our experience, I tell you, the traffic would be minimal on that road. I mean, it would.
Depending on the time of day and the season and what month, you're right.
Considering that's Route Six, adding that, that traffic is, it would be very minimal. We could ask the applicant to come up with the traffic design, but it, nobody's gonna like the answer. I know already the answer, it's, it's minimal. So anyway, uh, and anything else, Director, comment about?
Those were the, the main things that, as I say, I think, you know, just for safety and flow and for those that, that are there.
Right.
Um, you know, I don't know enough about the water situation, I mean, the, you know, all of those, I mean.
We don't know.
Right, they're all working on that, so I, I can't speak to those things.
Right, we don't either.
Right, Jimmy, you want that?
I was just gonna say, it's good that he came in, he let his, he let, you know, he aired his concerns, he let the applicant hear them. The applicant still has a, um.
Lot of work.
And, and now he has more information to bear in mind as they prepare the plan. So I would say thank you for coming in and thank you for your comments.
That was all I wanted, thank you, I appreciate it.
I have a comment.
Yes.
Walter Cruz, two oh four Sandwich Road, I've lived there for twenty-two years. I get off of that exit twice a day, on and off, I come off of there every day. Traffic is horrible, he's right. I almost got killed on that road last year. We have an accident once a month on that road, you wanna pull the police record, you can. Last October twelfth, I got hit on, head-on, somebody coming down that road distracted. As far as, I'm gonna recommend that the board does not approve this until you get a traffic study and an exact sewer plan because I do not wanna hear that I've owned my house there for twenty-two years. There are forty bathrooms in that house, and I go to turn my shower on after living there and looking at that yellow house for twenty-two years, just sit there with a tree hanging over it. And now all of a sudden, I go to take my shower, when I get home at five-thirty, six o'clock after working a hard day, and I have no water pressure. And I'm the last house on Sandwich Road before the river.
Yeah.
Um, and they need to do a correct traffic study because we're a tourist town. Come summertime, they are never gonna get to that facility coming up off of the highway there because that thing backs up all the way to the highway and down the highway. I cut through Wayham just to avoid it or get off of Exit Two. So if you have not lived on that street, I've lived on there for twenty-two, and I got family members that lived over there for sixty years. That road is horrible.
Which, which one are you referring to?
When you're coming off of Exit One.
You referring to Sandwich Road?
Cranberry Highway, Route Twenty-Eight. Two oh four Sandwich Road, Route Six.
Are you, you're talking about, he's talking about Sandwich Road, Route Six?
I live on Sandwich Road, I've been there for twenty-two years.
Which one is your house? Are you number one? Are you number one?
Two oh four, I'm, I'm right down the street from Michael Walker.
He doesn't, he doesn't show on this place.
It's not shown on there.
You on Plymouth Road?
No, I'm down Sandwich Road, it's just not shown.
Oh, oh, you live.
With the road, the whole kind of rest area.
They stopped before the Cranberry Bar, that's now, uh, Bird Sanctuary.
It's like near Belton?
Yeah, just after Belton, where Setra owns all the land.
Okay, okay, that's where you, down there you live.
Right, and I have issues now with just, I'm upset.
Don't you live on Plymouth, have you said Plymouth?
No, I'm not on Plymouth, I'm on Sandwich Road.
Oh, you're on Sandwich Road?
Sandwich Road, they're at two thirty-nine, two forty.
Would be at?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That right there.
Okay.
It will affect my property, they're drawing water away, they're adding more sewage waste because they're gonna have bathrooms in every unit, they're adding more sewage. That sewage plant right now cannot handle what it's getting now, they're talking about trying to figure out how to do it, you know?
I totally understand that, Walter, and you know, it's not our, uh, it's not, we don't decide for water and sewage.
I'm considered an abutter, I'm not on the board right now.
Right.
I just wanna be heard.
You're not in the butter either, you're, you're in the neighborhood.
I'm in the neighborhood, it affects my home if you put in a facility that's taking water away from me, forcing me to get a pump.
And a butter is somebody who abuts the property. I'm saying, I'm not, I'm not arguing that you're in the neighborhood, you don't abut the property.
Let's not.
I'm not arguing, I'm just trying to make it clear for the public that he does not abut this property.
Walter Cruz at two oh four Road, two oh four Sandwich Road is speaking.
If you don't mind, it don't matter if he lives on Main Street, he could still make his opinion.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But just let's.
I'm not gonna be swayed into thinking a certain way. Voice in my opinion, can I speak?
Right, you're absolutely right. You def, you're absolutely right, and you have the right to voice your opinion.
I just wanna finish.
The water, go ahead, finish, why don't you finish?
All I'm saying is, I would like for the building commissioner to be assigned and brought on. They did a great job at redesigning this. The last time I said, we talked about this, this building looks higher. I'm a builder, so it looks higher than what they had originally. I don't think this should go forward until the commissioner's on, they have a set of plans, they have a traffic study, like anybody else would have to do on an intersection that comes off a state highway, and they have to have a water study to find out. How's it gonna affect the houses that are within that area that's gonna draw water away from them? I'm not worried about the sewer so much, that's more on the sewer because I'm on Septic. I can't get sewer because I'm too far down, it would require me to get a pump, just to pump up to the sewer.
Right.
But that's all I wanted to say is.
Okay, no problem, totally fine, and you have, a lot of, makes sense. We definitely, apparently, you know, you heard the traffic, everybody wants traffic studies, which is.
I, I understand that, uh, Mr. Chairman, but, but again, the, um, uh, some of the traffic solutions, as, as the pastor pointed out, if, if, uh, you know, half an hour, fifty people coming on that road, I'm, I'm surprised that, uh, you don't have a tr- a traffic officer there. It sounds like.
We don't have traffic what?
A, a, a detailed policeman there if it's, if it's that much of a, of an issue.
Fifty cars in half an hour is nothing, one car a minute, you don't need a police for that.
Okay, then, then.
Two cars a minute, that's minimum.
I don't, I don't think we'd have any impact.
Regardless, we're not, I'm not a traffic engineer, none of us, I believe, is here. So let's get a traffic study done.
Mm-hmm, well, we'll do it.
Uh, we work on a facade, like we talk more and more. I still wanna take Mr. Sample and Conti, Mr. Conti's, uh, opinion, but let me finish. Sewer, we have no say, if they say, either you, it's a black and white, either they have capacity or they don't. And we don't make the call, we can't make them come in. Water, whether they could, they say yes or no, it still is not our say. So it doesn't matter, if the water department say it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass. If it passes, it passes. But believe me, I'm sure the superintendent, I believe he's, Mr. Reed, very, very careful with this thing. I just went through something with him, and he's very particular, and he does a good job. And I think he's very good, he won't allow it if you're gonna lose any pressure, I know he does a good job. So I wanna go to Mr. Sample.
I don't have anything to say tonight, I'd like to see more on the, the plan.
Right, it needs a lot of, lot of work, lot of design.
I'm almost aggravated.
Because you don't, you don't have design?
Sitting here, we're talking a lot about something that we don't even.
Exactly, exactly, well, what, it's, it's not bad, that's a long process, it gives them something to come back with a lot of information. Mr. Conti.
Uh, I, I also agree with him. I, I think the, the redesign from, uh, last time you guys were here, it looks, looks a lot better. I still think it needs to be refined a little bit, a little bit.
Oh, yeah, no, we, this is a design development, uh.
Right, but I think you're headed in the right direction with it.
So, so apparently, everybody thinks you're going the right direction, so you gotta come here with a full-blown plan.
Exactly, no, no, we will.
Full-blown plan.
Yep, yep.
So then we could really pinpoint things out.
Mm-hmm, no, I, I agree, that's, that's the reason we're here.
Wanna send them with some comments, put some input?
Uh, just to say that you have two active applications before you, one is for a variance.
Right.
The other is site plan review, and I'm just looking at your own schedule, that the decision deadline is December second. Um, I think that this plan, it looks very nice, there's a picture and it looks like it could be put in the middle of Spalain Field. But that's not how the contours of the ground go, so until.
That's why I wanted to look at that building.
Until I see, until I see all of the details that are supposed to have been submitted under site plan review, uh, there's nothing more I can say in the project at this time.
Correct, that's why you need serious plans.
Well, we, we, we understand that, we, we.
I, I do understand, uh, December second, but they're supposed to come back December eighteen. If you can't come December eighteen.
November?
November eighteen.
November eighteen, you're gonna have to give us an extension.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we, we understand that too.
Right, so, uh, so you get a lot of work to do, I guess.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Can I ask one last quick question?
Yeah, sure.
It was mentioned, but I didn't think it was discussed, uh, the density of the residents.
Yes, so that was a memorandum, I think Sonya might have included in your packet, that I did pretty extensive research on the bylaws, because the commissioner had asked me to take a look at that and see, we had talked about six, six hundred and fifty square feet and talking about hotel motel. Um, looking at our bylaws, the closest thing that we have, uh, there's no, nothing that says assisted living, but it's an intermediate care center, um, and that's an industrial use. So when we're talking about that six fifty square feet exclusive of the closets, that's under residential use, we're not seeking residential. So my legal opinion is that we're an industrial use and an intermediate care center. It's, there's nothing regarding the size of the unit, so that is, like, we spoke about really from the state's authority.
Can I interject one quick thing?
Yes.
It's institutional use.
Institutional.
Not industrial.
Not industrial, institutional, under the bylaws.
Yeah.
So that's what I found with our bylaws, it was pretty silent, again, of the.
It's six hundred square feet excluding closets and.
For residential use.
Right.
Um, and then, yep.
And you have five ninety-something.
For the sizes of our room?
I think you propose on like five ninety, which is fine, I'm not arguing this. So keep in mind, say this thing, this project goes belly up, you're gonna need a very hard variance to turn it to apartments, and you will not get it from me anyway, if I'm still on the board.
Well, I, I think, uh, I, I appreciate the comment, Mr. Chairman, but, uh.
I just wanna direct you the right way.
I, 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 I thank you.
You know what I'm saying, so.
We, we understand it's, it's not a multifamily, and we don't wanna, you know, build it that way. Things, things can go belly up, but we, we, we understand.
I, I hope you never go belly up, but.
It happens.
If you wanna, if you don't wanna come for a variance, you probably wanna reduce your, your numbers. But the problem is when, if you turn it to apartments, you still need, you're gonna need, not only a variance from us, you're gonna need a special permit from planning board.
Exactly.
You know?
I, I guess, I guess.
It's a very harsh way to go if, if this, I hope million times it doesn't happen. I hope you do well and stay like this. But if, if this thing doesn't go well, it's very hard, it, you don't have an option too, just to let you know. It's a very hard option, I don't think it'll fly in this town.
Putting all your eggs in one basket?
I mean.
Kind of?
So, but I'm sure you're a businessman, you know what you're doing.
I appreciate the wisdom.
There's a lot of demand on these facilities.
Exactly.
But I'm just, I'm just trying to be fair for you and very clear and very honest. If you are to turn it to a different project, it's ver, it's, if it passes here, it's not gonna pass planning board.
Let me be, let me be fair, honest, and blunt.
Right.
I've been doing this since twenty fifteen with the town.
Yeah.
With their cooperation. It started out as a affordable elderly housing project, uh, many things were said. I, I never liked it myself. I'm here before you with a project that's for assisted living, to take advantage, uh, and, and, and maybe advantage is a bad word, but to, to, uh, look at the demographics of our country, myself, and a lot of the people in this room. It's gonna be a facility that's needed, uh, the baby boomers, of which I'm, I'm, I'm ahead of the baby boomers. I don't, I don't see this thing going belly up if, uh.
I'm, I'm just.
No, I, I understand, but I, I, I take, I.
I don't see somebody go belly up.
I, again, I, I, I'm looking for your vote, looking for the whole, the whole board, but I can't sit here and, and, uh, have a hypothetical. I'm not gonna come back and, and look for multifamily housing there. I don't think multifamily housing, it's not a great location for it to begin with.
But actually, it is a good location for multi-housing, but I hope, I, I.
That would add a lot of traffic and stuff.
I, I'm, I'm in faith, I'm not giving my vote, but.
No.
I'm okay with the project, I don't have an answer on the variance for the, what do you call it, the solarium. So that would be.
Yeah, that, the solarium is, is, one of the things.
We can discuss it after, but as a, as a, as a assisted living, I think we are in need, and.
Yeah.
And especially in this town, and there's a lot of fifty-five and older or sixty-five and older that needs this project. I know a couple myself.
We may, we may all end up there, being there together, you never know. So one of the things I'd like to just, just point out that we're, we're, we're trying our best to accommodate the people on Plymouth Road. I, I, I thought you lived on Plymouth Road, but apparently, uh, you live further down the road, but I did speak to the people there. Uh, we wanna make sure that it stays a, a dead-end street, uh, and, and it's not gonna be used, it's not our intention. Uh, we, we did make, uh, the driveway come down. Again, uh, you don't have this in front of you, I, I didn't wanna get into it tonight, but I just wanna make it clear that we're gonna present a, a complete package, and that's why I need some time, uh, to, to do it. We'll, we'll, on the eighteenth, we may come and just do, ask for continuance, I, I, I don't know. But let's go, let's go there. And then, um, you know, I would like to just point out, one of the things that you said, Mr. Chairman, about something unique, I think that, that tower, which won't be really visible from the street, it will be visible from a distance when you come, when you come down, uh, off of Twenty-Eight and off of, uh, Route Twenty-Five. And I think that would be a distinctive feature, and I, I'm hoping that that would be one of the things that, uh, you were talking about signage, the tower itself, like a spire, would be the signage, you know, we don't have to put a big sign up there. You could, you could just say the, you know, when you come off the highway, you'll see the big tower there.
Clock tower.
Yeah, the clock tower, do something like that. That, that's my intention of this whole design thing, and, and we wanna get back, I appreciate your input from everybody that, that, uh, you know, I, I hope you like what we're trying to do, and we'll, we'll fine-tune it and, and place this, this project here correctly in, in the right spot on, on the site plan and then submit it, uh, along with the drainage calculations and everything. You can imagine, it's pretty high, it's a moving target, we, if we don't know what we're doing with the building, we can't do anything else.
Right, let, let me ask you, San, on, on that twelve-four opening here, why you don't have two egresses in the front? Like in and out over here?
We, we, we do, we will now, I, I'm, I, I don't wanna get into that because that plan is not, no longer.
Okay.
No longer with us.
Because I would say, in, coming in here and coming out, it makes perfect sense, especially for a fire truck or anybody, instead of turning around, backing up, and coming out here.
Yeah, no, we, we.
Yeah, forget, you gotta revise this because you gotta put a gate here, so regardless, you need an exit.
Yeah, we, that entrance is gonna be, I think, I think.
I would work also very closely with the fire department.
Yeah.
To see the big truck, I think it's like eighty-five feet, they will need a way to back up and stuff. So just wait to minimize your, your trips and your, your replanning. So work closely with them, so, because that's the most important for circulation.
Exactly, yeah.
So discuss it with them, work with them, see where you end up, and.
I, I've met with Chris Smith, Captain Smith, uh, on, I think, four occasions now, and, and he, last week, the beginning of, or the week before, uh, he gave the, the new ladder truck information to, to my engineer. He didn't have it, he didn't have it to give to him until last week. So, uh, we have that information, he's, he's putting in the new, the new building location and the plan and everything like that. And, and we're gonna, we'll come before you, I hope. We, we've asked him to, to review the plan, but we haven't, we asked him to stop because we don't have a plan for him.
Right.
So we asked him to, to please, to hang on, and we'll get you a plan now that I know what the parking is, now that I know that the building is in the right direction, uh, because it, it matters to me what I do with these ins and outs and all that stuff when, when it comes down to the, to the, uh, the fine tuning. So I, I think we'll be prepared the next time, uh, to give you a phone call.
Commissioner, you needed final answer of pa, from parking, from him, because we've been looking for his letter. we'd be looking for his letter.
Yes, he said it happened next week. He said he would do it when it comes.
Very, very important because we don't have a project like this, so we really don't know. None of, does anybody have any experience with those? No? So we're really gonna depend on his recommendation.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say something I didn't wanna say, but, you know, I, I hate to compare myself to others, but All-American, which is a hundred and twelve units, has fifty-seven parking spaces.
Where is that?
That's in.
All-American assisted living.
Oh, Rosebrook, oh.
Rosebrook, the assisted living facility there is, is a hundred and twelve.
How many are you proposing?
I think we're at ninety-six, right?
Yep, and we're gonna have sixty, minimum sixty parking spaces.
They have fifty-seven. That's, that's what I was mentioning, Mr. Chairman, when we went down. I drove down and saw eleven cars parking in the parking lot. So, so that.
A minimum sixty-five what? H?
No, we're gonna have minimum sixty parking spaces.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And how many units? Eighty?
Under a hundred.
Eighty-six. When I say ninety-six, I'm trying, eighty-six, yeah. I just put ten more units on. But Rosebrook, All-American, rather, has a hundred and twelve units, and they have fifty-seven parking spaces, and that was what their requirement was.
And you have the same idea of business, right?
Pardon me?
You, you the same thing?
Same thing. Exactly the same, you know?
Okay, we will, okay. So make sure you have, the commissioner, that, when that was done, he wasn't around. He probably should look at the plan.
I reviewed the All-American file to try to find some history.
Have him look at it, because he wasn't around when that project.
Yeah, I showed him that, so.
Yeah. Yeah, Julian has looked at the file, and that's how we found out.
You guys wanna send these people with some comments until they leave?
I'm good.
Some suggestions?
Other than get out?
No, no, you don't have to get out.
It's obvious. We, we need to see the plan.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely.
We need.
So councillor, we're gonna need from you a letter. If, are you coming on the eighteen? There's no way. November.
When's the next meeting after that?
November eighteen.
The next one's in December.
December, the second week?
And then there'll only be one meeting in December, too, because there's this other holiday in.
Second week.
Second week of December?
Yeah. So, so if I file that, I think we would want the second week in December.
All right. Let me, let me, hold on, let's look.
File what? The extension?
Yeah, I think.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry. I haven't cross talked you.
I don't think they have a problem. We have a special meeting on November eighteen. You're not gonna make it, right? No way?
No.
No.
We have December nine, twenty-third, most likely is not gonna work. So the nine.
Nine.
Of what?
December.
December.
All right, so there's, so we, we actually needed an extension now.
Yes.
Because December second.
Wait, she's gonna have to write it down. They could email it to Mr. Buckland and.
I'll be here on the eighteenth, too, so I can just submit it, then or prior.
And it'd be legit. All right, she has to write it down before the time. It's legit. Because come in November eighteen, if we don't have your extension by writing, we could take a vote and close it.
I'll submit again well before that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll put a note that we're looking for an extension from you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Absolutely.
You said it's going in the right direction, but.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Could you, could you grab a mic somewhere?
Grab a mic and state your name.
Take mic.
My name is Lydia Graves, and I live at sixty-eight Cotting Street in Medford, Mass. And I'm the architect.
Yes. You guys stay next to the mic. You can sit down and talk.
Okay. My only question was, I, I gathered, did you guys like the, the direction we're going, but you were suggesting shed roofs, like the ones at the place down the road, which I think I saw a picture of, but they actually, the picture I saw had a lot of gable roofs. So I was wondering, do you like the gables, or would you rather see something else?
It, it's not totally up to me or, or each one individually, but we wanted to swallow, get, wanna be able to swallow it easier. So we, that building is, go by this building, you think it's not there. They did such a good job, the way they did it with the dormer, shed dormers and the brick, and, and it does have some balconies. They put ACs, but it gives you idea, and it's, it's pretty good. They did a good job. Get some ideas.
Okay.
Doesn't mean your idea's not good. Maybe they'll go for it. Everybody goes, but I suggest you explore other ideas.
If I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think what he's looking for is the atrium to be stepped in from the very extreme face of the building, so that when you look at it from the ground, it's broke, you know, there's, there's almost a false height of roof line.
Excuse me, you mean the solarium?
The solar, what'd I say? Atrium?
Atrium.
Yeah, solarium.
I'm picking everybody apart, I'm. But what, what happens is, it is set back. It's set, it's set back.
I, I understand, but maybe on this planet, it's not apparent to everybody, so that's why I didn't want you to go off in the wrong direction.
Right. That's why I'm asking, because I'm, I don't wanna, I don't wanna do something that isn't.
I, I, I think you might have accomplished it, but we may not be able to see it on that drawing.
Okay, yeah.
Let me ask you a quick, before you go. What's the height of the units inside? What do you have?
They're eight foot, eight foot.
Eight.
Yeah. It's a nine-foot floor-to-floor.
Nine, nine foot?
Floor-to-floor.
Floor-to-floor.
Is nine feet.
Nine foot for the construction.